So this is Campbell City Council. So just to let you know, we'll get back while I should. We're calling it. And I hope it was okay. So we did find out. Yeah. But the staff will make a presentation. You're going to see everything on the screen. Okay. Yeah. I'm sure. I got. Perfect job. The topic.
Yeah. It's amazing. I mean.
I want to go into.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
I can have your. I want to say.
So. So. There's. And that's. Yeah.
For the. I need this. This.
Go with it.
No. So these. Yes. Very good. Let's say nothing. I suppose. Because.
I'm. You're. Why? That's why I'm. Just. It's. Easy. True. That's. Yes. Very. Oh, my God. Yeah.
Uh, not. Okay. Yeah. Well.
It's. Probably. Then. So. I. Not that they use. They're not. Do that. Like. So. Oh, yeah. We're. You think. I see. Uh. Yeah. Yeah. She. Okay.
Seven. Yeah. Sure. Two. Part. Yeah.
So. A little. Oh. That's. All. Things. Yeah. Welcome. First.
That's. How is the video? It's white. Those. Yeah. There's. See how it's one meter above our head? Okay. Stuff. Some say it's too dark. Very. Good. Yeah. Sorry.
Are you sure? Jackson? Are you sure? Jackson?
I think.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome. This is the regular meeting of the Campbell City Council. To protect our constituents, city officials and city staff, the city reminds all those in attendance that physical distancing and face covering are required. I call this order. I call to order this regular meeting of the Campbell City Council on this Tuesday, December 7th, 2021. This regular city council meeting is conducted in person and via telecommunication and is compliant with provisions of the Brown Act. This city council meeting is being live streamed on channel 26, the city's website and on YouTube. May we have a roll call, please? Councilmember Bybee? Present. Councilwoman Landry?
Present.
Councilmember Lopez?
Present.
Vice Mayor Resnikoff? Mayor Gibbons?
Present. And just for the record, Mayor Resnikoff is recovering nicely from his recent surgery and will be back with us at subsequent meetings. And at this time, I'd like to ask our new employees for the city of Campbell to come join us at the podium to lead us in the pledge of allegiance. And as we say the pledge, please note that the flags around our city and state and country are at half mast. This is in honor of Senator Bob Dole, who passed this week, and also in commemoration of December 7th, when Hawaii was invaded by Japan. So may I pledge allegiance?
Go ahead. Go ahead, sir.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And just stay for just a moment, if you all would. Obviously, wonderful to have great new employees here with us in the city of Campbell. We value your contributions and I'd like you to just each, if you'd be so kind, come, state your name and your department and role. And you will get a, you receive a certificate of appreciation for doing our flag tonight. So just one by one, if you just indicate your name and how you fit in.
Hi, my name's Cody Johnson. I'm currently on FTO in the police department. It's an honor to be here. It's a fantastic department, fantastic city. So thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you.
I'm Carolyn Butler. I'm the human resources representative in the city manager's office in the human resources division. Thank you for this wonderful opportunity. I've been here about a couple of months and I've learned so much from each and every one of you guys and I appreciate this opportunity and continue to be part of the team. Thank you very much for having me.
Thank you, Carolyn.
My name is Brandon Irwin. I'm with the police department here also in field training as well. Extremely grateful for the opportunity and I'm extremely excited to work for the city of Campbell.
Thank you. Welcome.
My name is Tony. I'm the inspector. I work for the public works department. Grateful to follow the opportunity to work here. I work with a very nice group of people and very knowledgeable people. Appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you. Welcome. And Adriana, I believe.
Hello. My name is Adriana Robles. I'm the newest public safety dispatcher for the city of Campbell.
Thank you. Thank you. Very important roles, all of you. Thank you so much. And you have permission to leave. You do not need to stay for all the wonderful work that this council does. Thank you.
Thank you all. Welcome aboard.
Yeah. There. Sorry, it just took me a moment to get the computer screens working. At this time, we have an opportunity for special presentations and proclamations. I see there are none. And we will now go to communication and. No, next one. Communications and petitions. And that's where we invite the city attorney to report out on any closed session actions.
Yes. In closed session this evening, the city council unanimously voted to authorize the city manager to enter into an agreement resolving litigation by numerous public entities concerning opioid addiction in nationwide in our communities. Yeah. And including actions against Amersource Virgin, Cardinal Health and McKesson and Jansen Pharma.
And then we also have no reportable action from the executive session of whatever date that was. November the 30th. November. November 30th. November 30th. Thank you very much. We are at the portion of this meeting with oral request. Please note, this portion of the meeting is reserved for persons wishing to address the city council on any matter not on the agenda. Persons wishing to speak may address the council but are not required to provide their speaker card or name and address. Speakers are limited to two minutes. The law generally prohibits the council from discussing or taking action on such items. However, the council may instruct staff accordingly regarding oral requests. And I just wanted to make note, if there's anyone in the audience who would like to speak on an item that is on the agenda, it's helpful for us if you'd fill out a speaker card. So this is for items not on the agenda. I see none in the audience. Do we have any online? I do not have any hands raised for any items not on this agenda. Thank you very much. In that case, we will call, close the oral request portion of the meeting and go to mayor's announcement. I am pleased to announce that the Government Finance Officers Association and the United States of the United States and Canada has awarded the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting to the city of Campbell for its annual comprehensive financial report with the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2020. The report has been judged by an impartial panel to meet the high standards of the program, which includes demonstrating a constructive spirit of full disclosure to clearly communicate its financial story and motivate potential users and user groups to read the report. The certificate of achievement is the highest form of recognition in the area of governmental accounting and financial reporting. And its attainment represents a significant accomplishment by a government and its management. So with, Will is not here? There he is. There he is. Will, please extend our appreciation to you yourself and your staff. You made a lot of changes that even I can figure out the budget better.
Um, well, I am, I, I, I would, um, like to hike the council. Oh, sure. How about the councils continued, uh, continued, uh, continues, uh, continues support? We certainly wouldn't, wouldn't, wouldn't be able to achieve what we are. But I, I, I also, I also for sure would like to recognize the heart of our, our team as well. They're the ones who, who, who do the counting each a day. They, they do AP. They do apparel. They put the hot words together. I'm the one, the one who, who is, who overs, who oversees the team. But it's, it's really all due to them. So, well, also to the council as well.
Yeah. You're, you're kind of offering us congratulations, but it's you and your team that have really made it essential and transparent and available on our website for anyone in the community to do the research or ask questions that they need done. So thank you. The city's clerk's office is accepting applications for the Park and Recreation Commission. To find out more about this commission, please contact the city clerk's office at 408-868662117 or visit the city's website, www.camblecay.gov/boardsandcommissions. The deadline to apply for this position is Monday, December 20th at 5:00 PM. Joining the chamber in downtown Campbell for an evening of festive fundraising fun, festive fundraising fun tomorrow, Wednesday, December 8th, from 5:30 PM to 8:00 PM. Mix, mingle and be merry while supporting the Campbell Community Toy Program. This holiday mixer is filled with delicious food, seasonal music, a great raffle and auction items up for grab, with all the proceedings benefiting the Campbell Chamber Community Toy Program. For more information, please visit Campbell Toy Program, all one word, campbelltoyprogram.com. And I believe it's at Darling Fisher. So it's always one. As if that's important. Okay. Holidays at the Ainsley House is opened through December 19th. The Ainsley House is open Thursdays through Sundays from 11:00 AM to 3:00 PM for unguided walk-through tours. It's all decorated up. It looks great. This year's holiday theme is joys of the season. While visiting the Ainsley House, stop by the museum's holiday boutique. The Ainsley House is excited to celebrate 27 holiday seasons at noon on December 9th through 12th with holiday teas and tours inside the carriage house. Enjoy a champagne tea followed by a self-guided tour of the Ainsley House decorated for the holidays. A holiday tea and tours are a museum fundraiser and on Friday and Sunday, you get served by yours truly, the mayor. So enjoy the opportunity. With the holidays approaching, the County of Santa Clara Public Health Department recommends all eligible members of the public who live or work in Santa Clara County receive a COVID-19 booster shot. The booster is appropriate for almost anyone ages 18 and older. Six months, yeah, and older, six months following the last Pfizer or Moderna vaccination or two months following a Johnson and Johnson vaccination. County clinics are taking appointments at www.sccfreevax, all one word, s c c f r e e v a x dot org. And many local locations readily accept walk-in patients for booster shots. Pfizer, Moderna and Johnson and Johnson vaccines are also available within the county. Additionally, many doctors' offices and pharmacies provide COVID-19 boosters. I will say the website for the free vax does work, but it takes a little bit of practice to get through it. So be patient. You might have to try a couple of times just to get the system to work and then find an opportunity. But please, please consider getting your vaccination and booster. City halls will be closed for business beginning Thursday, December 23 through Friday, December 31st. Police and urgency services will remain open. Thank you. We are now at the portion of the meeting for consent calendar. All matters listed under consent calendar are considered by the city council to be routine and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion on these items unless the request is made by a member of the city council, city staff or a member of the public. Any person, person wishing to speak on any item on the consent calendar should ask to have the item removed from the consent's calendar prior to the time the council votes to approve. If removed, the item will be discussed in the order in which it appears. Are there any council members, staff or members of the public that would like to pull any item from the consent calendar? And that would be items one through nine. I see none from council, none from staff. Nothing from the public. And nothing from the public. Thank you. Is there someone who'd like? Yes, sir.
Would it be appropriate to make a brief comment?
After we take a vote, I think, unless it has something to affect your vote, then we'd have to pull it. Okay. So let's take a motion for items one through nine consent calendar.
I'll move approval of the consent calendar.
Second.
We have a motion by council member Bybee and a second by councilwoman Landry. May we have a roll call vote? Councilmember Bybee?
Aye.
Councilwoman Landry?
Aye.
Councilmember Lopez?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Resnikoff is absent. Mayor Gibbons?
Aye.
And councilmember Lopez?
I just thank you to San Jose Water for sponsoring the public art project. That's always a positive.
Thank you. I appreciate that acknowledgement, too. We are now at the portion of the meeting with public hearings and introduction of ordinances. Members of the public may be allotted up to two minutes to comment on any public hearing item. Applicants and appellantants and the representatives may be allotted up to a total of five minutes for opening statements and up to a total of three minutes maximum for closing statements. Items requested or recommended for continuance are subject to the council's consent at the meeting. And if there is anyone wishing, a, an applicant wishing to speak on an item, please identify yourself so that you can have the appropriate time. Item number 10, this is the public hearing to consider application, PLN 2021-128, PLN 2021-129 of Nicholas Kamash for a conditional use permit and site and architectural review for T-Mobile and AT&amp;T to allow for the re-establishment and continued operation of an existing concealed wireless telecommunications facility, a faux, a faux tree pole with the requested exemption to the Winchester Boulevard master plan height of 45 feet to allow the retention of approximately a 69-foot tall facility on property located at 2041 South Winchester Boulevard in the PD Plan Development Zoning District. It is recommended that the council adopt a resolution approving the conditional use permit. And we have a presentation by Stephen.
We do. And thank you, Mayor Gibbons, and members of the city council. I'm thinking, good evening. So this particular project site.
Can you speak a little louder?
I can stand closer to the mic as well. The project site is located on the west side of Winchester Boulevard, south of Campbell Avenue, behind Merrill Gardens, which is a mixed-use assisted living, senior, senior living community. While the project is, while the facility is existing and it's not proposed to change as part of this entitlement, the underlying land use entitlement has expired and a new land use's approval is required to ensure the facility meets current requirements. Once a permit is granted under the new ordinance, the facility will be eligible for future extensions of time by the community, by the community development director. Although the facility exceeds the maximum height of the Winchester Boulevard Master Plan, it predated an action of the plan and is not imposed to increase in height as part of this project. The planning commission and staff support granting a height increase through an exception to the Winchester Boulevard Master Plan, which requires council approval. In consideration of the applicant's proposal, staff and the planning commission recommend that the council prove the applicant's request. And this concludes staff's presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions on this? Okay, I see questions from councilwoman Landry.
Um, yes, thank you. Thank you, Stephen. I read in the report under the SARC, they talked about repairing some of the branches and having them extend. But the discussion in the memo was whether they structurally could handle. Has that been resolved or is that still to be determined?
So that's correct. As part of the SARC review, it was reviewed September 28th meeting. They were generally supportive of the project as presented, but it indicated that a desire to extend the branch lengths to 18 inches to be consistent with our current code requirements. Long story short, we provided flexibility in the conditions of approval to allow that to apply to the extent feasible pending a structural analysis, which would be reviewed by the community development director.
And that has not occurred yet.
Does not occur yet. It would be occurred in the, in the building permit review.
Yeah, I appreciate their comment about extending them to make it look better.
Thank you. Any other questions? Seeing no other questions, we will open the public hearing on this item. Do we have any public comments from members of the audience? Seeing none, we will go to our virtual audience. No hands raised virtually. Thank you. If there are no comments from the audience, we will close the public hearing and bring the item back to council for discussion and/or a motion.
I'll make a motion. I don't see any other lights on. I make a motion that the city council adopt a resolution approving a conditional use permits with site and architectural review for T-Mobile and AT&amp;T to allow for the re-establishment and continued operation of an existing concealed wireless telecommunications facility, i.e. a faux tree pole, with the exception to the Winchester Boulevard master plan height limit of 45 feet to allow to retain an approximately 69-foot tall facility on property located at 2041 South Winchester Boulevard in the PD Plan Development Zoning District, finding the project categorically exempt under section 15301 of the California Environmental Quality Act.
I'll second.
I have a motion by councilwoman Landry and a second by councilmember Lopez. May we have a roll call, please? Councilmember Bybee?
Aye.
Councilwoman Landry?
Aye.
Councilmember Lopez?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Resnikoff absent. Mayor Gibbons? Aye. Thank you. That passes unanimously. We will now go on to item number 11. This is a public hearing to consider an interim ordinance to adopt urgency measures to implement Senate Bill Number Nine to allow for two-unit housing developments and urban lot splits in all single-family residential zoning districts. It is recommended that the city council adopt the interim ordinance to adopt the urgency measures to implement Senate Bill Number Nine. And we have a presentation by community development director?
No. I'm here. Senior planner, Daniel.
Oh, you're doing it, Daniel? Okay, sorry. My notes. My cheat sheet says Robert does the introduction.
So I'll make sure you can see and hear him. Okay, so the presentation is from Daniel. Daniel, can you show your screen?
I will do that right now. Okay. We do have consideration for the city council this evening.
Daniel, just to interrupt you, I beg your pardon. Your slide isn't showing correctly. There you go.
There you go. And Daniel, we have an echo. I'm not sure if your volume can be adjusted.
All right, let me switch to a different headset.
Okay, that should work.
And then we've lost your screen again.
It's. One more time. Okay, how about that?
Nope. There you go.
There it is. Nope.
Showing here. Yeah, you need to go to the full, full screen there. There.
All right. Excellent.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. So under consideration this evening is a interim ordinance to be adopted on an urgency basis to implement Senate Bill Nine. So the purpose of this meeting is to over, as a, provide a brief overview of Senate Bill Nine, review of the provisions of the draft interim ordinance. review of the provisions of the draft interim ordinance, and discuss next steps and council direction. So on September 16th, Governor signed into law Senate Bill Nine, SB Nine. SB Nine effectively overrides single-family zoning by allowing two-unit housing developments in all single-family residential zones, effectively allowing two primary homes.
Daniel, I'm sorry, we've got to help you with your getting rid of the echo.
Councilwoman Landry and councilwoman Bybee have their computer microphones on, not muted, that may be on the computer on Zoom.
Check your Zoom. You're down at the bottom of the screen, your Zoom. You've got your microphone muted?
Yeah.
Yours is not muted. Okay.
So you're able to.
All right, so try it again, Daniel. Sorry.
No worries. All right, so in addition to the two-unit housing developments, which allow for two primary homes, as well as the allowable ADUs and JADUs currently allowed, SB Nine also allows for what in terms of urban lot splits, allowing single-family parcels to be divided into two parcels irrespective of existing minimum lot sizes and to allow for two primary dwelling units on each parcel, but no ADUs. So in fact, just schematically, understanding there are different scenarios that may actually be developed in real life, SB Nine will allow four units, different combinations. Without a lot split, that could take the form of an existing single-family home, a new single-family home, as well as an ADU and JADU, or alternatively a duplex, which under different provisions for ADUs would allow for two ADUs. In both of these scenarios, you would still be looking at four units. Similarly, with an urban lot split, as restricted by SB Nine, an urban lot split would allow that single-family parcel to be divided into two, and then on each parcel, it limited to a maximum of two units that could take the form of a duplex, a single-family dwelling with an ADU, or two detached ADUs. So absent a very, very narrow, limited exception, as noted in a footnote in your staff report, the vast majority of SB Nine projects would be allowed up to four units, which is a change from current zoning, which effectively allows for three units, since single-family properties are allowed currently one primary home, an ADU, and a JADU. SB Nine does provide the allowance for the city to adopt objective zoning design and subdivision standards, but only to the extent that those standards don't preclude the creation of two units up to 800 square feet each. However, the city is limited in terms of rear setbacks. We cannot apply setbacks greater than four feet for siding rear property lines. Parking is also limited to one stall per unit, except for properties that are within a half-mile transit or a car-share vehicle. Additionally, all proposals must be ministerially reviewed and approved so that there is no public hearing or any sort of administrative discretionary action. The city would be, currently has about 6,800 R1 zone parcels that could be affected by SB Nine. Approximately 80% of those are within the R16 zoning district. The remaining 20% are combinations of R18, 9, 10, and 16. There are some exclusions, however. Any properties that are listed historic on the city's historic resource inventory list or that are hazardous waste sites within a flood zone, identified natural habitat, or within a delineated fault zone. In terms of an interim ordinance, the government code allows for adoption of an interim ordinance on an urgency basis that takes effect effectively immediately without the standard second reading or recommendation by the planning commission. This allows time for the city to prepare and adopt a formal ordinance in order to implement SB Nine. The law does require a fourth vote of the city council. And as structured, the draft interim ordinance would supersede any provision in the municipal code to the contrary. In terms of permitting process, the interim ordinance proposes using the concept of a zoning clearance, which is an existing ministerial mechanism within the city zoning code, so that the entirety of an SB Nine project would be reviewed at one time by the planning division. So that would include all proposed units on a property, including primary dwelling units, as well as the ADU or JADU. Urban lots place would be processed through a parcel map as opposed to a tentative parcel map, which is, in this case, a ministerial application. As proposed, that would also require concurrent review of a zoning clearance so that the city can look at both the new parcel configuration and the proposed units to be developed on those new parcels. The ordinance also creates a mechanism to waive development standards in order to make sure that properties may be developed with up to two units of 800 square feet each. As structured, that mechanism would prioritize preservation of open space by requiring the director to waive standards other than private open space, front yard setbacks, and interior building separations, so that within a project site, that open space, both within front yards and rear yards can be preserved to the greatest extent possible. In terms of objective zoning standards, the interim ordinance effectively reinforces existing standards as per the applicable zoning district and area plan, also allowing for SB Nine's reduced siding rear setbacks of four feet, as well as SB Nine's reduced parking requirement and exceptions. In terms of design standards, absent any clear direction from the council, staff took an approach of just trying to build in some best practices in terms of design. Those include privacy requirements, limitations on heights of entryways, doors, and floors, restriction on roof forms, roofing and wall materials, and a requirement that stairways to upper-level units be entirely enclosed. With regard to subdivision standards, the approach taken here in terms of trying to be objective is to define allowable lot types by illustration using definitions. This is intended to prohibit the creation of irregular lots, which effectively are lots that are not defined, as well as continuing the city's historic practice prohibiting double-frontage lots, which are lots that touch a public street on two sides. In terms of subdivision standards, the interim ordinance also recognizes that many of the, all lots effectively will be substandard from existing city requirements, so that the interim ordinance adopts reduced lot width and frontage requirements that are more or less consistent with SB Nine's minimum lot size requirement that new lots not be less than 40% the size of the original lots, and in no case less than 1,200 square feet. The interim ordinance also codifies SB Nine's limitations on prior subdivisions and subdivision of adjacent parcels, and also requires that the applicant indicate through written declaration that they tend to occupy the new parcel as specified by SB Nine. Just a couple other provisions regarding demolition of homes. SB Nine precludes demolition of homes that have been rented over the last three years or deed restricted as a low-market rate unit. There's a prohibition on short-term rentals of SB Nine units, and also just codifying that SB Nine projects may only be denied if the building official finds that they would have a specific adverse impact as defined by the law. In terms of next steps, the interim ordinance would go into effect January 1st, when SB Nine goes into effect for 45 days. Staff anticipates returning to council by February 1st to seek at least one extension. The formal ordinance is anticipated to be reviewed by the planning commission in February with a city council hearing following six to eight weeks later. And then during this meeting, the council may provide direction for specific revisions that can be reflected in the formal ordinance, since much of what is contained in the interim ordinance is really just staff's guidance and suggestions, and much of it is voluntary specifically with regards to the design standards. And with that, staff does recommend that the council adopt the interim ordinance this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Daniel. Are there any questions of staff?
Yeah, I can start us off with a question. So honestly, first off, really appreciate the report and the new presentation. There's a lot in here that that's very helpful, and so I appreciate your taking our feedback last time this came up. My question, my first question is about the irregular lots. I'm I'm a little concerned that this could potentially be a prohibition that that would not be allowed under the terms of the bill and other legislation that limits what we're allowed to do. So could you just clarify that? Is this a new requirement or is this already on the books somehow? Because if, so an example that you, that was in the presentation with the cul-de-sac, wouldn't that existing lot be considered irregular? So I guess I'm not understanding where that, I understand the intent, but I'm not understanding the where that's coming from.
So this is an idea that we have been considering separately prior to SB Nine as part of the update to the city subdivision ordinance. That's a kind of longer-term project that was starting to come to fruition, unfortunately, due to some staffing limitations and then the need to prioritize the SB Nine work that's been put on the back burner. But currently, our subdivision ordinance has no particular standards regarding the shape or configuration of parcels. And that's caused some challenges in the past. And so this approach is a way to create logically created parcels in a manner that is objective, since we are effectively creating model templates of what new parcels should physically look like. And hopefully, that's relatively easy for the development community to understand. It does not preclude an irregular lot from being subdivided. It simply requires that the resulting lots be of a standard shape. Now, most of the city's lots are generally standard, so we don't anticipate that this will be much of an issue. I mean, as opposed to some cities who have a greater number of lots that are unusually shaped.
Okay, thank you. That's a very helpful explanation. I'll have a further comment about it in discussion. That's helpful. And then could you discuss the logic behind prohibiting rooftop decks?
That's simply a privacy mechanism, since a rooftop deck, particularly a second-story building, would have pretty easy visibility into adjacent backyards.
Are we confident that that falls under the objective standards and not subjective design?
Well, it's objective in as much as that we know what a rooftop deck is, and it's clearly prohibited. So there's no subjectivity in terms of whether or not it's allowed for one homeowner rather than another. It's a blanket prohibition.
Okay.
But again, this is a reinforcement. The design requirements here were just staff's guidance. Much of that is not really reflected in any other city documents, since the city does not currently have objective standards for any type of residential development.
Right, fair enough. Okay, thank you. I think that's good for my questions for now. Thank you.
Thank you. If there are no other questions, then we will open the public comment. And I think we have an applicant here who's trying to hand in a card. That's quite all right. That's okay. I'll confirm that. So we'll open the public hearing portion, and for anyone wishing to speak, if you're here in the audience, having a card is very helpful. If you're on virtual, please raise your hand or dial star nine. And we will go through the list with, starting with the of those here in the audience. So I have one card from a member of the audience, and that's Anna Mendez. Anna, please feel comfortable coming up to the podium, and you can adjust the podium height and the speaker, the microphone, so you can speak as closely and directly into that as possible. Take your time. Take your time. And just state your name and address if you're so inclined.
Yes, certainly.
That's perfect.
Okay. My name is Anna Mendez, and I currently reside at 958 West Hacienda Avenue with my better half Craig Lopez. Well, my better half and I, my better half is an owner occupant of a residence in the Santa Moss area, Campbell neighborhood, specifically on West Hacienda Avenue, that is zoned as R-D, which denotes two-family residential housing. We do not need to use both sides of this duplex and would wish to sell the other half, but we would either be forced to bear the unwanted risks of co-ownership or be forced to sell the entire property, when what we truly desire is to continue to reside in the half that we currently do. The per-single-family unit lot specifications as currently set forth by SB Nine would offer us the ability to split our 8,100-square-foot lot into two 4,000-square-foot lots and sell the adjoining attached residence. Other Bay Area cities are currently adopting comprehensive SB Nine standards and guidelines that they are looking to adapt to cover properties that might not otherwise qualify under SB Nine, such as RD and R2, two-family-zoned properties, to more immediately address the scope of the housing crisis facing our California localities. A particular benefit in including two-family-zoned lots under the provision set forth by SB Nine is that no visible change would be apparent to the neighborhood, since individualized utility services and parking spaces are already in place. A factor that has proven contentious regarding the SB Nine by current residents is the valid fear that lot splitting would mar the character of their neighborhoods. In the case of the inclusion of the few owner-occupied RD lots like ours, it would result in a win-win for both our ability to remain in an affordable, single-family residence and a win for Campbell to acquire two new, single-family lots that would serve to greatly improve working middle-class residential tenure. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. I see no other speakers here in the audience. Do we have any speakers online? Yes, Madam Mayor, we have Trudy LaFrance. Is her hand up? Trudy, if you can, yes, your hand is up, and if you are new, please join the meeting.
Yes, I have a question that I heard this last week that Governor Newsom said historic areas are going, I'm sorry, I'm at 600 Cangren Drive, Campbell. I also heard this last week that Governor Newsom has included historic areas in this, even though your interim report ordinance said that historic areas would not be included, even though I don't live in a historic area. So that's one concern. The other concern that I've read up on SB Nine is that somebody with an ADU unit could split their lot and then also build another lot, house, and ADU unit on the other lot. I don't know if that's going to be a consideration. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Trudy. Do we have any other speakers? That is the last hand raised, but if I could call the other names. So if you are online, please raise your hand or dial star nine. We will now go through the list of those who are in attendance who may wish to speak, but please raise your hand if you would like to speak. We have Daisy Huang and Emma Yaz. I don't see either of them. I don't see any additional hands raised. Okay, those are my final speakers. Okay. So, okay. Emma, you are online. Do you want to speak? If you do, please raise your hand. Yes, Emma does want to speak. Her hand is now raised.
Hi, my question has already been resolved. I just want to say that I don't have any comments right now. Thank you.
We just want to make sure everybody who wants to speak can speak. So thank you for letting us know.
Yes, thank you.
All right. I see no other hands raised. And with that, we will close the public hearing and bring the discussion back to council. Councilmember Lopez, you said you had some discussion points?
Sure, I'm happy to kick us off. So I'll start by saying again that I really appreciate the process and the work, and even the footnote that was cited. You know, that example and the research that went behind that is very helpful. The diagrams were helpful to really visualize. I know we had some hypothetical questions of the potential impact, and so even details like, oh, there's 11, you know, properties where this applies, is very helpful to help us make our decision. Even details like, oh, there's eleven, you know, properties where this applies are very helpful to help us make our decision. Um, you know, I'll I'll start by saying I I picked on the roof decks as an example, but um there I I I have some. Concerns um about it. It feels like we're doing some of the process backwards of uh. Doing the the objective and and I understand from a staff perspective because we we wanna um. Bring in the objective standards where we get a a chance that's an ongoing project. Um, it feels a little backwards to do it um in 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 this ordinance. Um, rather than to do it holistically and it assumes that those will be adopted perhaps as as the ultimate citywide objective standard. So. That that that's something of a a concern uh for me, but I I I could ultimately live with that. Um, y- y- you know, um, uh, a- a- as long as there'll be. Um, they can be designated a- objective standards under the legislation. Um, um, but but that was a little bit of a concern for me. Uh, the other point I wanted to raise maybe for discussion and and just gauge some some thoughts. Is whether there'd be openness to consider considering a greater floor area ratio. Um, because I know that that when uh I hear concerns about this, a lot of them are about privacy and about the second floor. Um, and so I'm I I'm open, you know, I don't want to say that we can never have a second floor, but. The the report assumes that the city stance is is that we actively want to preclude those. Um, so I think I'd be open to the discussion of of whether we might want to change that in in the ordinance. Um, allow greater floor air ratio to allow uh properties that could be a single uh story, but still meet meet the designations. Um, uh, be- because of some of tho- those privacy concerns and also frankly environmental concerns that I have. Um, about um a- about yard size. So just wanted to raise that point for discussion in general, really pleased with with the staff work. Um, and and appreciate the presentation.
So I'm gonna chime in and ask for a little bit of clarity. Like you, I have a lot of questions about various components. Um, and I can go over those in a minute, but my main my main understanding and staff can help me if if I've missed the point here. Staff tried really hard to stick with the underlying existing. Criteria. The. Uh, what do you call it driveway width, the setbacks for the the driveway width. Um, we currently don't allow rooftop decks, I don't think. We don't allow um balconies or on uh on the sides or back only in the front. Um, the so things like that. Um. I I have lots of lots of comments. Um, I mean, mine are kind of mundane in the sense I think that um. The materials constraints are are too constraining, things like that. But I appreciate where we are. We're trying to be as consistent with the SB nine goal of. Following the existing guideline, the existing ordinances. Um, and so I thought staff did a good job of that, even though I would take exception um to some of some of it. But can staff clarify? I think one of the speakers and I'm I'm probably should have asked for clarity. Our staff report and the document as it is says that historic properties. Are currently excluded, which is consistent with the way the law is written. The governor has made some other thoughts, but right now consistent with the way the law is written. And then if something comes up when we redo the final ordinance, we can uh respond to that at that time.
That is correct.
Okay, thank you, Daniel. And the other one um is from the um member of the audience about, I think she said RD zoning, which I wasn't following totally. Um, may they come and speak to staff um after the and make an appointment to see staff to get clarity on what that is and then staff can come back to council. Um, again, what we're looking at right now is an urgency ordinance to try and understand. How we can really best meet the intent and provide the best possibility for housing. For what we currently understand.
So. Absolutely, we can follow up with the speaker.
Okay.
Um, may I ask a clarifying question about your comments, which I appreciate? Um, so my impression from the staff uh presentation, apologies if I misunderstood what was kind of the opposite of what you said.
That's why I asked it.
Yeah, and and so maybe clarification uh while you're up here, uh Director Eastwood. Uh, so my understanding was that these are new standards that aren't implemented citywide, but that we hope to get to to the point of objective standards. Uh, are they are they existing ones? I I guess, you know, the mayor commented.
Yeah, I can answer. Um, both statements are correct. So the these standards only apply to SB nine projects. It's a standalone ordinance and and directed because SB nine is before us. Uh, the city and the department is separately working on objective standards. It's on our work plan. Uh, at some and that will come to you in parts throughout two thousand twenty-two. Uh, at some part in two thousand twenty-two, we'll have to reconcile the SB nine standards with with those standards. So so your statements both were correct. That helps.
So I think just to be sure that I'm I understand what you're saying. The reason I said what I said is is driveways at eight feet with five foot setbacks. There's um SB nine that says the uh forty sixty split, so that's at the twenty-five feet. Um, we do have on on a criteria that says um decks on the second floor only in the front that does exist. So um, there are things like that that I felt from my conversations. Staff was trying to be consistent with what we are already doing. But knowing that we have are missing objective standards. Uh, in other areas, they've worked hard to pull that gap together as a first past here because we have to. Is that helpful?
That that is helpful and ultimately consistency is what I'm looking for. So I appreciate the discussion and clarification.
Yeah.
Can I get clarification on what you said about the second story? Were you saying not to have a second story or to add a?
No, I'm I'm saying that that the the presumption in the uh what's being proposed is that we want a second story. Um, and I'm saying would there be openness to having more flexibility with the floor year ratio? So that um homeowners could could have a single story.
I don't know that it's saying promoting, it's just it's clarifying the objective standards to. Get rid of the question of can I have a second story, right? This is to answer that question.
Well, two things. I'll start and and Daniel uh actually has a really good way of explaining this. So it so with SB nine, you can do, sorry. Uh, again, Rob Easter, Community Development Director, you can do a lot of building on one lot. So two two primary units plus two ADUs, that's just a lot of coverage. And so there's a, you know, then we can adopt objective standards a a bit on how that plays out on a property. So as Daniel looked at it, there was some questions on how that happens. You could either option one, cover the entire lot with buildings. Uh, or option two, uh, try and have some objective standards and has more open space and that would more direct. The duplexes to be, I think the term you had used, the mayor stacked flats to go up. And knowing in our ordinances today in our single-family districts, there's a high priority for open space. Staff selected to prioritize open space. So there is an encouragement when you design these to move up rather than cover the entire lot.
Does that um, I think I mentioned this the last time, we have a four hundred and fifty foot square, a four hundred and fifty square foot open space requirement. I thought it was four fifty.
But if I could, so we do have an open space requirement of seven hundred and fifty square feet. And so as structured, the interim ordinance would try to prioritize preservation of that private open space along other standards. So that we would provide exceptions to floor area ratio. So as the director indicated, that building could be two stories and have a smaller footprint. To preserve uh open space on the property. The alternative is to simply have more building at a greater lot coverage and less open space. Unfortunately, there's so much building that's involved. Uh, there is a trade-off either way.
Does the open space total number count the setbacks or is that a chunk of open space in between the buildings?
It can count the setbacks, but only if the setbacks are at least ten feet. The definition of private open space is ten foot dimensions in either direction. So that could be within between buildings or between buildings and property lines.
So I guess the really the question coming down to Sergio is. Do we want a higher floor or more open space? And I would feel like having some open space with the provisions that. You know, the clear story windows, you're not looking down on your neighbor's backyard down the second floor. You don't have a roof deck. You don't have a balcony. So I think that what we are proposing works to come up with that balance and and it's not that we're encouraging a second floor. We're saying. If you do want to keep your open space, we can allow you to do a second story, correct?
Yeah.
Okay, and I I think you guys have done a great job. It's a it's an emergency ordinance. I think it's being very proactive in trying to um prevent a lot of things happening in January that are confusion. Um, so I think this does help clarify things and it is a temporary emergency ordinance. So we have some time to work out details and hear more from the community. Um, I think we addressed the historic uh Trudy's question about the historic and currently right now we are. Exempting so no historic home designation at a state or local level can be used to subdivide, but if the governor's talking about that, we can't. Vote on that right now because we don't know what he's proposing. And regarding the RD, you're gonna talk to them separately to because I don't know what RD. I didn't even know we had that category.
Yeah, RD is a duplex zoning. So this applies to single-family zoning. So uh she's addressing have a broader policy question in on housing.
Okay, so she would not qualify right now for this?
That is correct.
Okay, so that's something we can look into as we get past the the emergency, correct? Okay, thank you.
I.
Councilmember Bybee.
Thank you. I I concur with what the other comments are made that it is um. A a temporary ordinance to put in place some guidelines and and regulations um to coincide with the state law that's. Um, we don't really have a lot of choice about so. Um, and this will give us an opportunity to work through things, work through some issues and then um be able to tweak tweak the final ordinance. So thank you, staff, for um the efforts that you've done to bring it to us tonight.
Uh, thank you, and I would concur also with that. Um, nothing's perfect, but we've been handed something very challenging. Um, and um, the goal of this effort, uh, which I do agree was done well, is to provide clarity. As soon as possible, knowing that we're gonna be have lessons learned and we can by this process make adjustments. Um, in the January, February timeframe. It's fair to say HCD and the state really don't know either. This is a learning curve for them. And we've had positive feedback um from the different organizations that have contacted us. Um, in cu- including Yimby Law and others that were positively um encouraged by what we're doing. So um, I mean, I have I have tons of questions about fencing and duplex definitions versus townhouse definitions. I'd like the graphics to be a little clearer. I mean, those kinds of things. Um, I think the flood maps uh should be a little more prominent of an issue. Um. Just things like that, but I suspect there are all going to be lessons learned and thought about. In the January, February, or even if we revise it again in six months when we're trying to make the ordinances. Um, criteria, uh, objective criteria more consistent across everything. So um. Uh, I I think I I think we've the the staff has done a job, a good job such that the council can feel very comfortable. With the very positive manner in which we are supporting SB nine. And making it clear as of January first. And I think that's a big accomplishment. Yes, sir.
I I can I I concur. I have a uh clarifying, a logistical question and then uh just a final comment if that's okay. Um, a couple of my colleagues, uh, directors said you use temporary. Is there a plan right now to bring this back or what what kind of?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, well, apart from the urgency process, it, okay.
We we would bring back the normal ordinance. I think a lot of the comments today, we wouldn't fold into that normal ordinance process. It's likely. Because it goes to the planning commission council, the urgency ordinance would timeout before you could see it again. So we might have. You you'll probably see one extension just to allow us enough time to go to the planning commission and council. So you will see a normal ordinance come back in the January, February timeframe, plus probably a small extension to the urgency ordinance. Just to allow enough time for us to do that.
Yeah, because we don't have meetings until mid to late January, which makes it tough.
Right, thank you. I appreciate the clarification. And then I'll just say I'll I'll concur again, you know, thank you for all the outreach to the organizations and and the positive conversations there. Um, and all the work that really went into this um from last time that that we saw. And thank you to the the commentators. I think a good example of um why this could really be a benefit to the communities. Thank you.
Any more discussion question? Yes, ma'am.
Laura is gonna make a motion, but I think Anne has it. No, okay, can I make a motion?
Yes, please.
I make a motion that the city council adopt an interim ordinance to adopt urgency measures to implement Senate Bill number nine.
And we have a second, we have a motion by Councilwoman Landry, a second by Councilmember Bybee. May we have a roll call vote, please? Councilmember Bybee?
Aye.
Councilwoman Landry?
Aye.
Councilmember Lopez?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Resnikov absent, Mayor Gibbons.
Um, and I would like to take note that this is by definition of an urgency ordinance requiring a fourth, fifth vote. And we did uh receive that this evening from council. And um, may I ask for the motion to be read?
Yes, uh, the title of the ordinance is being an interim ordinance of the city council of the city of Campbell. Adopting urgency measures to implement Senate Bill number nine to allow for two-unit housing developments and urban lot splits. In single-family residential zoning districts, file number PLN two thousand twenty-one dash one eight seven.
Thank you. We wait, wait second reading. Wait for the reading.
Wait for.
Wait for the reading.
I'll second.
And I believe that is all the action council needs to come uh take to complete this action.
We need to vote on this.
Yeah, I'm just meaning board of vice. Yes. Uh, Councilmember Bybee?
Aye.
Councilwoman Landry?
Aye.
Councilmember Lopez?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Resnikov absent, Mayor Gibbons.
Aye, thank you for all that clarity. We don't do this all the time. So thank you, thank you, everyone. And we will now move to the new business portion of our meeting. This is the conceptual ARPA spending plan. This is a recommendation that the city council discuss a conceptual ARPA spending plan. And provide staff with feedback regarding the areas of interest for future development, follow-up and approval. And I think we are having a presentation by Finance Director Fuentes.
Uh, yes, so I'm uh I'm gonna just pull up my uh screen here and just give me one second on that. Okay. Um, so a good evening, uh, uh, council. Um, we are um, we are are here uh t- t- uh tonight um to uh discuss a conceptual ARP. Uh, 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 hacking plan. Um, uh, to uh covering um the uh two uh two uh during the two thousand and twenty-one of. I did a a deduction, a process. Um, we uh did um, uh, uh, discuss some, we did discuss, I'm brief. Um, how to spend um our ten, our ten, our ten million dollar AR, ARPA. Uh, funds. Um, but at the time that the uh, at. The time that the council adopted the budget in uh June. Um, we uh just uh learned um that we were also to uh. Uh, get a uh, a traditional, a two, uh, an additional two million in ARPA of funds. Over what we ex- ex- expected. over what we expected to get when the ARPA was first approved by Congress. So the council did express some desire to also discuss how we would spend the additional ARPA funds that we, that we cannot expect to get. So tonight, we're, how are we here to begin to spur the discussion of how we, how we could spend, how we could use our ARPA funds? It's really to discuss how to spend any extra, extra funds over, over and, over and above. What, what will need to really to keep the ship afloat? And so for, for, for any ideas that we discuss tonight, the council, the council, the council report, it, it does give some brief details about some specific purposes that, that the council, council, council may wish to spend the ARP upon. But it doesn't give complete details until we've done a chance to hear from a council about what, what you may, what you may want to pursue. We, we, we will, we will return to a council again with complete details based upon tonight. But we did, we did again want to get your input upfront. Before we got too far down the road there. So there are some basic questions that we're hoping that a council can address tonight. The, the, the key one is, how do we set aside up to two and, two and a half, two and a half million of estimated excess ARPA funds for specific, a council directed purposes? If, 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 if no, then we, we, we also can go down to alternative one. Why are we right? And instead in, incorporate the discussions into the future budget and the CIP discussions either for fiscal, fiscal year twenty-two, three, or also down the road. But if a council does choose to set aside some amount of excess ARPA funds for specific purposes, we, 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 we also do want to understand, understand the objectives that a, a council would hope to achieve. We, under the, under the council report, under table three, there are some digested programs and products. There can put into the report to spur the discussion. But a council, council may, council may also want to do different programs and products. So we also give alternative to. And, and also they are constrained in the total amount of ARPA funds. So we, we, we also hope to understand what are the most important of specific purposes and programs and of products that a council would, would want to address whether ARPA funds. So had we talked about excess ARPA funds? We're really talking about the amount that, you know, based upon our, based upon our current projections of income and expense to a date, based upon different assumptions. What we now, today, what will we, what will we, what will we, what will we not need to keep the general, the general, the general fund whole in FY twenty-one, two and three? And, and so, and so over time, the access amount of two, two and, two and a half, two and a half million of ARPA funds that we project that we, that we're able to spend on specific purposes could, could, could either tell up or down. So we, we do recommend that we take a, a deliberate, cautious and strategic approach. We, we don't need to commit the, we don't need to commit the ARPA funds in full until the end of December of two thousand and, two thousand and twenty-four. And we also don't need to spend them down in full until the end of two, until the end of two thousand and twenty-six. So we do adopt them at time. But then a council did express some, some desire in June to also to begin the, to begin the discussion. So in, in, in terms of objectives, we've detailed some suggested objectives that a council may want to consider. One, deciding how to spend ARPA funds. We, we fail that based upon the intended purpose of ARPA that these fit well, had the intended purpose. But a council, council may also wish to consider either different objectives or also different objectives as well. So again, under table three of the council, the council, council, council report, we, we do less than explain some of our suggested programs and products that we feel would be, would be helpful. But, 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 but also would be an appropriate use of our ARPA funds. But we, we, we certainly cannot pay for, pay for all of these. So we, we can do, we do want to understand from a council. Are there, are there, are there, are there, are there any suggested, are there any, are there any suggested programs and products that would be, would be of interest to a council? And then if so, what are your top ones? So it's also something to, again, discuss as well. So I'll again, I'll turn to the questions that were, were, were hoping to address tonight. Our, our, our full, our full team is here to address and go through any of the details of specific programs and products. And again, if there are any specific purposes that are of interest to our council, we'll again turn down the road with clear and full details. But, but, but also the complete cost. Also, if we need to say, talk to the, if we, if we need to talk to the county about any, any, any type of partnerships, or also any outer, outside agencies. It will also give us the time to, to work the house as well. So I will again turn it over to a council now. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Director Fuentes. And I'm going to ask the city manager to chime in with me here. I'm going to do. We had a little discussion on how to structure the conversation. So I'll try it this way. So one, as staff has presented, we're here to see if and how council would like to spend about two and a half million dollars. And I think the staff report said that we had previously put the funds into the general plan, a general fund. And we did that because we thought we had about eight million and we needed all eight million to go into the general fund. We now have an extra two million, maybe two and a half, and that number may go up. So this is our first chance to take a look at it. I'm going to say outside the box from what was really needed at the time to backfill the general fund and keep staff. So that's why we're kind of here now. And the number of the 2.5 billion, I believe, based on the spreadsheet in the staff report, covers the projected shortfall for 2021, 2022, 2023. And then 2024, we're starting to come back into the black. So this number is a good number to play with. It might get bigger, but it's a good number to start with for, for our discussion. And the next point that came out was that on what timeline do we want to look at spending this money? By that, we meant if you spend it sooner, as indicated in the staff report, you get an impact sooner versus reducing risk by holding it back and spreading it out over the next three or four, five years. So sooner for faster impact, longer reducing our risk. Staff provided the guiding objectives to those two exact points. Physical stability, recovery, resilience and impact. So at the end of our discussion, we're going to come up with a list. And I'm going to propose, based on my conversations with the city manager, some categories where we can come back with, where we can come up with ideas. And the concept of categories was based partially on earlier discussions. But also you received from the city manager a copy of the National League of Cities summary of how other cities have spent their money. They organized it a little bit differently based on upper funding categories. But the categories that we come up with were institutional. Anything we're thinking about that it's, and supports the institution of the city. What community, anything that we come up with that supports the community, that mainly is our residents. And then the final category would be businesses. How do we, if we want to support businesses? Now, this, this is just a, a structure, not committing to us, but just to help us with the dialogue. And I know we'll probably go through so people can get their thoughts out over the list provided by staff. But I think the presentation makes it clear, this is simply a starting point. And that we have an opportunity to go beyond that and look at how, what the upper money is supposed to do and can do for the whole community of Campbell. Okay, the city manager is concurring with this. Okay, so with that thought in mind, do we have any questions right now of staff? Seeing none?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. I, I guess this is a question for the, for hotel recovery assistance. Could you elaborate a little bit more from what's in the staff report on the outreach process and how do, how do, is, yeah, I guess maybe to start from there with the outreach process specifically to hotels within our community.
All right, so currently in our hagars to the outreach to Campbell, Campbell specific hotels. We've worked with a, with a, I know a regional group of hotels in the county to understand what type of help that hotels over the county may, may need currently due to COVID. I've not specifically contacted Campbell, Campbell hotels quite yet. Because I, 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 I first did want to talk to a council upfront. A council upfront um to us to see if there would be in indeed um any. Any type of interest in um a hotel support. A program. Um I also didn't want to give the expectation. Um that there would be. A help. Um but 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 if the uh a council is open, open to the. Idea, um then for sure, um I will work directly with a Campbell. Hotels. Um but um just based on upon what we. I heard for on the uh from the county hotel a group. Um the 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 thing that they seem to need a help with right now. It's it's really a re- re- retaining of people. Um it's it's also to recruit of people to what uh uh to work. Um but also to promote um their uh hotels as well. Um so we we think that that's will 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 also. Will also be what um a a a Campbell Hotels will will need. Um but we we will also if um if. Uh if council does want to pursue a program. Um we will work with a Campbell Hotels as well. To really a a about um the a program. And also all of the uh details as well.
Yep, thank you. That's all my questions.
Thank you. If there are no other questions, I think we're gonna have a bit of discussion um when it comes back. I will open the public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience that'd like to speak on this? Um we have two people. Um Steve. Run forward your name and address for the record, if you'd be so kind, and followed by John. Hold on one sec, we gotta turn the mic back on for you.
Ha, thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, I echo now, great. Uh and council members. I have somewhat a tangential question. In the packet, it indicated that the A R P A funds could not be used to replenish city reserve funds.
That's correct.
So does that mean that as long as we have unspent A R P A funds, we can't put any money back into the reserves?
That's correct.
Oh, yeah. Thank you.
I'm right on that, right? Yes. Staff just confirmed that. Hello, John. Just please lower the the table and the mic for yourself.
Just two quick questions. What do the initials A R P A stand for? And where are these funds coming from? Thank you very much.
Very good question. Right to the basics. A R P stands for the American Recovery Plan Act. It was passed by Congress in January of twenty twenty one?
I know.
March, March of twenty twenty one? March of twenty twenty one. Thank you for keeping us on our toes, John. Is there anyone else in the audience wishing to speak? Seeing none, we will move to our virtual audience. Do we have speakers?
Nobody virtually.
We have no speakers from our audience. And looking around the room with no more questions from the audience, we will close the public meeting and bring the discussion back to council. Um I'm gonna take uh mayor's prerogative here and try something to see if it helps. Again, move us forward and also um. Fit into some some of the structure. Um so, for example, under what I call the institutional category. If I look at the list of suggestions from staff, under programs, it has economic development program support. Here, um I would look at this and say, that's um an institutional uh program. Um that meets the criteria or objectives um staff put forward. Um the Economic Development Subcommittee is coming back to council with some information and recommendations. So I think that um spent uh signing some opera funds to the Economic Development Program. When we know what it's going to be, um is a good idea. I wouldn't assign any money to it. I would just cat- put the category of economic development as being a a good use of opera funds. Um the Guaranteed Basic Income Pilot Program, I really like. Except that we do not, as a city, have the infrastructure to manage such a program. Um I I I'm hesitant to say that's the right use for opera funds. I think we might have. A better chance of helping our community if we can help with uh rent subsidies, utility subsidies. Food subsidies, other things that we can directly tag on to existing programs. That kind of thing, I think. So I would put that under community. Uh what can we do to directly impact and help our community? Without setting up a bureaucracy and additional staff and cost. That would be a big challenge for us and would take time to set up. Um hotel recovery to your question. Um I haven't spoken with the hotels um since June, July timeframe. June, June. Um they told me that their um. What do you call it? Occupancy rate has been going up. And actually, when I was there a week ago, they confirmed their occupancy rate is continuing to go up. But what they've chosen to do is drop their rent uh their. Uh rate. Instead of being five hundred and fifty dollars a night, it's two hundred and fifty dollars a night, or whatever it is. Their goal was to bring back their occupancy and then start raising the uh tariff. And so our income is down, obviously, because it's a percentage, but. I am hard pressed to see any way that we can tangibly support hotels at this point. So I'm not so so supportive of that. Um the Public Safety Wellness Pilot Program. It's been one heck of a couple of years for everybody. So I would support that as being um an institutional. Uh program that should apply across the whole city, not just a P D. I don't know what that means. We have an E A P program. How can we work with the E A P program to provide this? Uh wellness app. Don't know. So I could could go on and on. I'm sure you know that. But that's kind of what I'm thinking. If we could talk about things that each of us think is important or an opportunity. Um and then I'm just saying, structure it. Is it an is it an institutional benefit, a community benefit, or a business benefit? Um maybe we can can try and suggest, and a staff has said, they'll then come back. And say, this is what we think we can do with your intent to provide economic development, your intent to support residents. Something like that. Councilmember Lopez.
Yeah, for for comments.
Uh yeah, discussion.
Yeah. Um so so first off, thank you to staff. I know this has been a long process and I know because I've asked a lot of questions along the way. That a lot of work has gone into this and and a lot of um internal executive team discussions. And so. Uh really, thank you for putting the the thought and and work into this. Uh all of these potential, I'm looking at at the list of projects. I think they could all be fine and and plausible uses of our funds. I I think the. Um the the objectives laid out are are all fine. Um but I'll tell you just to start holistically where where I'm coming from and and what I believe and. People can feel free to disagree. Um but where I think we need um uh to focus on is economic recovery. And I see this falling into the, you know, in terms of the categories we laid out, that for me would probably be community and business. Um I think our our two aspects where we need to focus, um again, even though these could all be plausible uses. Um looking at at the intent of the funds and where the need of of the community is right now, where we can have the greatest impact. That that for me personally is what I look at when I'm judging um these projects. And and then the secondary thing under that is how do we maximize the money and get more bang for our buck? So where we can partner with with the schools, with the county, federally, you know, state, get matching funds as much as we can. That that for me could potentially bump something up that would otherwise be a lower priority. Um if we're getting that money matched or e- um uh significantly, that could bump it up a little bit higher to me. So that's a criteria as well. And and then in terms of the the timeline. Um based off the criteria that I just laid out in terms of economic recovery, um I think if there's a need now. Um we you 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 know, wi- within reasonable standards, um should should work faster. Um where it's feasible. Um so um that's just broadly speaking where I'm coming from. Um and and so based off the, even though everything on here, I I think um would be a worthwhile project. For me, if it's something that was was planned or or we we were hoping to do or or we we had it. A in the uh capital projects plan, that for me doesn't necessarily fall under the criteria where where I'm judging. Where's the need now? Um now we might not be able to do otherwise. Um not to take away from any of those being important projects that we would still need to do and still need to fund. Um and so just based off that criteria, um some of the things that fall under that. Um economic development, I agree, although I would personally put in the business category, but uh. Because that's ultimately where I'd like to see the impact, uh broadly defined. And. I'm I I'm trying to keep my comments general. I don't know that the exact amount is perfect, or you know, it could be tweaked, um but I'm trying not to get into that. Um potentially parklight support as well, uh falling under um businesses. I know that's uh gonna be part of a separate discussion, but um that could impact that discussion, so I'd I'd be open to that. Um the the Guaranteed Basic Income Pilot Program, I I agree, could have a lot of impact. I would not be supportive if it was just the city putting in a big pot of money. Um but the, so my understanding in speaking with other cities is that, one, there are funds available, matching funds. Um from the state and our programs being set up. And uh two, almost just as impactful, to your point, mayor, that there are actually resources in terms of people to staff the program. Um so for for the next time that this discussion comes back, I'd like to really get specific on that because. That's a good example of something that could bump it up to, okay, then that would be a good use because maybe it's only half the money and maybe we do have staff. Uh to support that where we're not ramping up. O- otherwise, for all the issues that you raise, I would have similar concerns, mayor. Um but I do wanna keep that just to explore that and keep the discussion going and and get those specifics. Um I I have to agree with you on hotel recovery. And and I I get where we're at in the process. It 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 makes sense. Uh Director Fuentes, but I'm saying, one, the point that you brought up, for example, I'm not sure that getting seventeen thousand dollars would would. Ultimately be much of an impact uh to decide one of the examples. Um but. Absent the knowledge that we're being told this is what we need and this is how we need it. I'm not sure it rises to same priority as as some of the other ones for me. I could be open to hearing otherwise. But but based off what has been presented and 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 my knowledge, um I'm not sure I'm there yet. Um and and I I agree, mayor, with the um Safety Wellness Pilot Program. And uh Councilwoman Landry, you might want to add to this, but we had a great discussion with the schools today. Um where there might potentially be some resources there that they're using some partnerships for for the city for. You know, they're looking at it from parents, uh not not just students, but the parents' perspective. That's where I think we can partner and get more bang for our buck there. Um I I understand with with all uh respect, uh our police department, which. No doubt about it, has has seen all the, you know, the the long list of impacts cited here. Um I I understand that the Cortico specifically is geared to first responders. And and so I, you know, I I would like to see us explore more holistic option for the city because of the potential of getting those matching funds. Maybe it's a, maybe it ends up being a separate program because we see that it would be such a a benefit to get. First responder specific resources. I I I'd be open to that, but the I'd be open to a combined program as as well. Um just to to maximize the the funds. Some of the the other, the 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 capital projects tend for for me with maybe with the exception of parklight support. Maybe with some other, you know, exceptions here and there, but just broadly speaking, tend to fall under the category of things that we should be doing anyway. That I I want the fund, but I don't know if it's the best use of our limited resources here. Although, you know, I'm openly keeping that conversation going. That's just where I'm at right now, broadly speaking. Hopefully, at some useful discussion direction.
Thank you. Uh Councilmember Bybee.
Thank you. So on the program side, um I'm leaning towards the um, again, the Economic Development Program Support. Um from the aspect of helping assisting businesses, um you know, economic recovery, um resiliency, impact. Um having um a more focused. Approach to economic development i- in currently and then um in 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 out years. Um so I think that's a a key component of it. And on the capital project side, um I would support the community center Wi-Fi enhancements because I believe that that's. Um an add-on to business recovery. It's gonna help um with Wi-Fi connection and um. Um a a needed uh area that's um. Probably in the capital project, but I think it 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 would help immediately or in the in the current. Current year or a year out to to have that in place. And then beyond that, um I I'm gonna go. Um outside of this and and suggest that we um consider. Partnering with with the county and other stakeholders. One of the things that um. I've noticed and everyone has experienced with COVID is the the increase in um. Mental health issues and and homeless issues and um limited resources to address those. And I I know that it's um. Social service with the county and it's kind of their responsibility, but. Um having served on the house task force last year, it just seems like we go round and round and say we've got these problems and. Now it's been um, you know, heightened by by COVID and and very little is done about it. And so for me, I think it's really important that we reach out and try and establish some type of a partnership with the county and other stakeholders to address those. Those issues, especially mental health issues, yeah, mental health issues. And um I know other cities have started pilot programs where. They've worked with the county and have come up with, you know, a certain amount of money to help um assist with uh. Public safety calls where they have mental health, trained mental hea- mental health people that respond with the police. To to um some of these calls to not only help the police deal with it, but really. Put the emphasis on the on the people that need to be dealing with mental health um calls in in the right right vein. So I would like to see some type of um exploration of of a pilot program that we could. Um provide some sort of resources to the county and then evaluate. How what what's working, if it worked, if it didn't work, and and then um hopefully at some point be able to continue that is. Um find a funding source for that. So that that's where I'm leaning towards.
Thank you, Councilwoman Landry.
Yeah, thank you. Um thank you, Will and staff, for putting this all together. It's a lot of number crunching. And a lot of work here. Um so I'm gonna follow what the mayor talked about, about the three categories. Institutional, community, and businesses. So I do not support the Hotel Recovery Assistance Program. Because most of the hotels, I think all but one, are international chains of hotels. I think the Campbell Inn is the only one that's a local. Um hotel, maybe the Carlisle, but I don't know for sure about that one. And I think that focuses too much money on a very limited number of businesses. Yes, we get a lot of tax revenue out of the hotels. But to put a half a million dollars into what, six hotels or seven hotels, seems like a lot of money. Um under institutional, I do not think we should be looking at C I P projects that are part of. Our general C I P that could be funded in other sources, i.e. the Campbell. Our general CIP that could be funded in other sources, i.e. the Campbell Page traffic signal. You know, is there a potential for a grant opportunity or matching or measure B? Um the civic center projects, uh I'm sorry to say this, Chief, but I think the trash enclosure should be part of measure O. The gravel parking lot, those both are being dictated because measure O is pushing the trash closure out of the way and pushing parking out of the way. So I don't support using ARPA money on those. Um I think mental health is a huge issue and as um Councilmember Lopez mentioned. He and I basically at four o'clock had a uh education subcommittee whose whole topic of the committee was. Youth, mental health and mental wellness. And um although they don't have a firm list of their highest priorities. Uh some of the things that they talked about is it's not just the kids suffering, it's the parents. And their mental health and the siblings and other family members. Um teachers and what we need, they along with the police have been there through this whole thing and we need to support them. And when I asked them, what would be your two top priority projects if we could contribute money to the schools? And one was um potentially adding Wi-Fi antennas. The uh people that don't have actual cable or Wi-Fi internet through cable, they've added antennas, they mentioned two locations. And that falls into the category of community center Wi-Fi enhancement and downtown Wi-Fi. Uh smart city kiosks. So I would put that as a bigger category of. Wi-Fi internet access to everybody as the community. And um looking at schools and what we could supplement, what the school is doing about adding the antennas, because it's not just. Hard cable for um internet. Um but we also talked about. Um maybe having some kind of pilot uh program with remote therapy. Um there was a program app, I can't find the name right now. There's some apps that they're using for some of the students on meditation. And um calming, things like that. Um we also talked about um. What the library can do with the community center with the schools. And Natasha was in the meeting and representative from the library. And there was a discussion of some of these mental health topics. The students may not want to participate. So could we do something like if you had a meditation group and the library works with the community center and they rent a classroom? So to me, some of that money should be looking at this whole teacher, student, parent. Kind of where the mental health situation is. So the two categories so far are Wi-Fi enhancement, internet. And um antennas, mental health and wellness. I put the public safety wellness pilot program under that category. Uh some of the school outreach under that program also. Um regarding businesses. Um I think it's just like I think the hotel is limiting in how many we reach. The parklet program downtown pretty much reaches what maybe ten or twelve businesses. And that's putting, even though that's not a too big dollar amount, it's supporting a limited number of businesses instead of spreading this out. I'm, you know, I'm in the fair, spreading the money out as as much as we can, but when we spread it out to make sure it's making the impact. I would rather see under businesses to create some types of options. So maybe there is. You get to pick one of these three for your businesses. We either help you do a facade update and enhance the front of your business. We help you work on outdoor spaces, which then could be part of the parklets would fall under that. Or maybe we help you with rent or utility bills. Those are just kind of the top three, but. Under businesses, look at it more holistically from the city because we need economic. I wanna say the word revival. To recovery still sounds a little negative. Revival is get our businesses back. The economic development plan is very important. Um one hundred thousand in the first year is probably not enough, but I want the economic subcommittee. To come back with a more uh holistic recommendation and it's bringing in a consulting firm. And and when we made our presentation last time, we talked about the connectiveness and nexus between the general plan. The housing element and economic development and that the consultants that came and presented to us talked a lot about our. Un-served businesses, the county as a whole, when we look at other resources, they're not in Campbell. So. To me, this economic recovery is this bigger picture. So that's my third. Wi-Fi, pub- uh wellness and economic development. Um not supporting of the um other public. Uh CIP projects. Um let's see, what was the other one? Uh non-paw businesses, I'd rather give the money instead of to the chain hotels, the big international ones. I'd rather help support the small. Non-paw individual businesses. Um I agree about with uh Councilmember Bybee on homelessness. And again, this goes under this whole mental health category. And what could we individually do? Maybe not everything, but we could supplement someone else's program. Uh so that would help. Under institutional, um although some of these CIP projects I don't support and. Should be, you know, looking for other funds. There are things that we could do that supplement city properties such as. The Ainsley House and the flooding, the roof. Um. What kind of emergency work does that need? And then also um under the police, uh I hear constantly about car break-ins. And theft and we don't have enough officers to be patrolling for these randomly. Targeted neighborhoods, but is there something we could do on the short term? That could help the police department to help our citizens with the whole car break-in and theft issue. Now, what does that mean? I have no idea. But what could we do now? Is there some short-term staff we could bring in or more patrol cars or more people? Um the other one is under community development, which would be um. We have short staff in the planning department. Is there a stopgap we can use for housing? Um we got what twenty-two ordinances and rules that have come down from the state. How do those all integrate? And trying to deal with our limited um planning department. So I think those are my categories and I really like. Calling this a revival more than a recovery.
Okay, thank you. I will add a few more and then I'm gonna try and summarize and see what we have. Yes, sir.
Um, ca- can I make a?
Yes, you're gonna ask, you're gonna get a no.
Um I'm I'm just feeling left out because I was the first to go and there's so many great comments. Um. I I just wanna uh second Councilmember Bybee's comments about the Wi-Fi enhancements. I understand the how that's uh. Well, and not only is is that a positive, we've seen greater use of the community center and and that that's tied to. Um uh recovery or revival and and uh well-being. Um but also the i- it's a good example of, and I know the city manager was in the discussion with the schools. Um where somewhat they're actually was not necessarily asking for funding, but just sites that uh place them. So. How can we think of it holistically to make sure um you you know, maybe it's actually less money or maybe it's supplementing that. And covering a greater amount of the city. So um and y- you know, I I um. Uh glad the city manager was in that meeting and and trust you'll you'll follow up on that. Um so that would just be my comment there. Um and and hopefully, you know, potentially that number could come down. Um absolutely second what was said about homelessness as as well. Um I. You know, no need to go much more than that, but really welcome the idea of exploring that further. Um. And 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 then the um, I I like the idea and uh Councilman Landry, I liked your. Suggestions around it um for uh small business um um outreach um or or assistance. I I'll disagree a little bit on the parklets because I think that I I agree that it's it's a small, we wanna target more businesses. But I I do think especially if there's beautification, that it's a benefit to the community and that people appreciate it and can walk around and. Um so so I think there's that. I I was thinking of it more from that community aspect. Um so maybe there uh there's a balance there, people get to choose uh maybe to spread out, be more fair. I think that's a a great approach. Um but yeah, I'd like I'd like to see some options come back before us for what that could look like and maybe shift the the uh hotel recovery or. Uh move the numbers around to to give us some options there. Um but otherwise, thank you for the great discussion and great ideas.
Hmm, yes, the discussion, I agree totally. Uh okay, um trying to hmm force myself to move along here. In general, I would support previous comments that um funding CIP projects, either moving them forward. Or setting money aside for three or four years out, I don't support. I think our funds need to be. More specific for our community and our businesses. Um I agree with the economic, I think there's complete concurrence on uh economic development needing to be at the fore. We don't know what that is right now, but definitely that's where the game is at for all of us for all kinds of reasons. And many, many discussion points come underneath that. Um two items that haven't come up um is um. Facility emergency fund. Well, you mentioned it when you were talking about the Ainsley House. It also applies to the theater. Um we have equipment breaking down, mechanical equipment and all of these things. We do not have money set aside. Uh and we know these problems are here. We know they have to be taken care of and we're just pushing them off. And then if they break down. So I would encourage another area of setting aside funds. And staff can come back with recommendations is some kind of facility emergency fund. And separate from that, but not interrelated, we haven't talked about water conservation. There are opportunities where we can really make a difference in water conservation. Um so I would, I would really, um and this to me is thinking outside the box, not for projects known. This is really. I'm totally exaggerating here, but can we collect water? You know, what is it that we can do um to set a good example and make a difference for the city itself uh on water conservation? Um so um I really did like the idea of um public safety. Supporting our community, getting out there and really uh helping with the thefts, the break-ins, the car break-ins, the package theft. It's it's um, it's become rampant. And I know in the proposal here, there is this um. Car license plate reader and I'm was at a presentation with the city manager and the West Valley mayors and managers. I was very impressed. I was hmm, that's that's pretty good. Uh I have less become less enamored by it for two reasons. Um one is our surrounding cities are doing it, so I'm not sure how much we can take advantage of that. Um and two is they're blanking out license plates, they're painting out license plates, they're stealing license plates, they're covering up license plates. So I'm not sure we get the maximum benefit of that. I'm open to it, but. Um I think putting bodies on the streets is what our community needs right now, but that's where I'm coming from. I definitely think. To me, that's an institutional public safety item that needs attention. Love the idea of all of you talking about mental health. I did think about the schools because they're somewhat separate, but I did um check with the chief. There is a program that North County and South County are doing where they have worked with this uh county um. Agencies on uh homeless to have mental health staff in specifically available to them. Um Mayor Sayok from Los Gatos has been trying to get the county to do that for the West Valley cities. Um I don't know exactly what that means, but I think that would be wonderful. And it fits in with everything that you've all said. I mean, we know mental health for the homeless is a significant issue. And we also can help our um first responders. Yes, we are very unique in having a department that every officer is trained. Um in the critical incident, um C X C was it C I S? I'll never remember the initials, but critical incident training, it's very unique. And has been extremely good for our community for many years. This is just the next step up. Um that meets the needs of our community. So I would definitely support that. Um I think um. And I I totally agree with you. I said a little not clearly enough that we wanna leverage whatever kind of. Rent control or not rent control, sorry, wrong language, rent relief. Or um income or utility assistance with other programs. Um we just need to know what's out there. Um I I kinda think um there's a lot of good programs with rent relief. Um and also a lot of good programs that have food insecurity identified. Where we really could do something as simple as giving them another money card that can be used for food. Another card that can be used for utility, something that augments these existing systems, not setting something up new. Totally love that idea. Um. Let's see. And the same with the businesses. I do feel that um. Council needs to be sure and respect, we have businesses across the whole city, not just downtown. And this is the chance to really acknowledge that and do what we can to support them. Um whether it's what Council uh Woman Landry was saying, increasing their outdoor business areas. Um or um whatever that means, really parklets are clearly part of it. But maybe there's parklets in other parts of the city. Um but really, and we could narrow it and say we're just gonna work on restaurants. That would make sense. We don't wanna open the whole world, but that's not a bad place to be. So um. I think. Uh let's see, water, public safety, emergency fund. Uh so I would support also what's been said, the community center Wi-Fi. Very straightforward, hasn't been previously identified, significant immediate value. Um I think that's great. Um the downtown Wi-Fi, again, I'm challenged by being downtown. Long term, that might have some potential, but that's a lot of money not getting benefit across the ci- uh. Uh our citizens. Um innocent intersection cameras not so hot on right now. Um I would put money into that out outside park. I would expand it beyond parklets. I think that's a good place. Don't support um things, CIP projects with other funding. It was one other. Something else. Uh yeah, I think that covers what's there and what's there. Okay, so that's my thought. And I'm gonna make an attempt to, staff's heard a lot. I'm gonna see if we can sort of identify what we're consistent with. That sounds okay? All right. So I think we all heard mental health. Um I think most of it was assigned in two different, three different ways. Mental health for the homeless. Okay, that's okay. You want us to stop for a sec? Okay. So mental health related to the homeless and giving support to the police department and looking at West Valley cities comparable to other programs. Listen, learning lessons from other programs. We talked about mental health across all employees, wellness programs. Um not just PD, knowing that there might be some specific programs set up for PD, but we may wanna. Expand that, we need to know more. And then mental health um for the schools, I heard more that not so much specific to the schools.
Yeah, to to clarify, um because not not everyone was in the meeting. Um they they're. What they lack right now is resources for parents. They they are adding counselors and there there's other issues there. But where there's a a a need clearly is with parents and potentially an opportunity to pull resources. Um and I'll add to that, I know the city manager was in the meeting, but there's potentially apps out there that could really scale up. And it's, you know, it's not hiring a lot of people, but.
Yeah, um I I I'm, I'll go with the flow on this. I'm a little hesitant. Stepping over the boundary of schools because we are so separate. So I'm a little hesitant on that. Um but at any rate, those are the three mental health issues that I've heard. Um clearly heard economic development sooner rather than later, stronger, whatever we need to do. Clearly heard that. Okay, um. Think I clearly heard not a lot of support for CIP projects in general. Move funding them, moving them forward or whatever, with a few exceptions that were mentioned. Um. Lot of support for finding something for communities, support be it money, be it rent relief, be it income, be it utility. I don't think, I think we're open to any and all as long as it can be leveraged. Please.
Um I'll make one comment or clarification for where I'm coming from. Um there is a lot of issues. There is a lot of issues with the, the uptake on things like utility and rent relief. And so I really, if those are things that are going to be discussed, I want us to be smart in how we're thinking about it. Make sure we're not just adding funds that aren't going to be used. And so that's where I think the basic income is a good, that's a different, you know, a, a value add. Maybe it's something that adds on to those programs, but I don't want to just throw money.
So I think we are all in complete agreement with that. We want to do something. We need to know more. Okay. Okay. Is there any support for a facilities emergency fund?
A question about that. Would that fall under the category of stuff like filling our reserves? Because we're not allowed to do that.
No, 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 no.
So that.
It could. It would, it would, it would, it would just need to be a spent down. It would just need to be spent down in full by the end of two, for that, by the end of two, honey, two, honey, six.
Twenty twenty-six. So I'm thinking of the, the canopy at the community center. I'm thinking of the mechanical system at the theater. I'm thinking of the roof at the Ainsley House.
Not just setting money in an emergency, a specific project, like I had mentioned, the flooding or the roof.
Precisely, precisely. It's, it's not putting a, I use the wrong term probably. Addressing facility emergency situations that are, that are known to be critical, but don't have funding. Yes, sir.
I'll, I'll come at it from a little bit of a different angle. And the clarification is helpful. Originally the discussion with the Ainsley House, they, they, the flood, they have insurance money that covers that. The theater received hundreds of thousands and a grant that was specifically targeted at, at theaters and performance venues. And so I wasn't quite sure about those examples. Where I, I could potentially be convinced is if we identified those specific uses instead of setting up a, a general fund.
I mean, totally, totally understanding and appreciate, that's a very good clarification. Thank you. It's not a fund in this traditional sense of putting a pot of money. It's addressing current known problems that are not funded and are just letting languish and getting worse.
And, and I'll add my additional criteria, which is that then I would like to see the tie to economic recovery or community wellness or, which I, I think there could very well be for, for those. So I'd be open to that.
Okay. Is that clear enough?
Yeah, as, as long as we, I mean, I go back to, I see kind of big categories. We're talking Wi-Fi, internet, economic development, mental health. We, you know, some of that breaks down community institutional, but the emergency projects are not necessarily addressing those categories. It is, okay, this would be nice. We have this emergency. Let's fix the project.
And I don't disagree with you. So that's why I did, why I thought of institutional as being different than community and business oriented. There are things that we as a city provide services and we need the facilities to be functioning. And if we continue to let them deteriorate, at some point, we're going to have to get them fixed. And the sooner you, you do that, the better is really where I'm coming from. Councilwoman Bybee.
But I see that as an ongoing issue and maintenance issue and upkeep. I, I don't see how those, how, those deficiencies that happen or, or failures that happen were going to happen regardless of COVID. So I don't, I don't see the connection to the use of the ARPA funds as opposed to, um, okay, an ongoing type of.
Okay, but I, I have no problem with that analogy. I, because, because I think you hit the nail on the head, which I wasn't thinking of, which is, I do think that we've discussing how the ARPA funds can be used to be beneficial related to COVID and everything that's the result of that. And this one is clearly is outside of that. I wasn't thinking of that.
Just like in what Councilwoman Bybee said.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. Okay, so let me just go through my notes. So we did talk mental health. We have talked in supporting small businesses. We have talked about community development. We have talked about seeing if we can back up with the police. We have talked about what we can do with PD and the homeless and mental health.
PD, PD, mental health was in addition to the PD wellness program, but mental health. And that could be including bringing in the community center, parks and rec. It's not just in PD.
No, I'm sorry. So that, if I didn't state it clearly, we, we covered three pieces of mental health. One was related to the homeless and providing some kind of, of coordination with the county that North County and South County have with the West County and our city. That's one. The second one is the well-being of all our staff, not just PD. So that's the second one. And the third one was the schools, which I thought was a little bit of a stretch.
Well, it's, to me, what we were talking about with education, the schools is that's our parents, that's our kids. And if the parents are the ones that aren't being able to get help, what can we do to supplement that? And, and like we had talked about, you know, if a, if a person as a parent can't afford their co-pay to go get counseling, is that something we would consider? So to me, helping the schools is helping the community as much as we can.
And I, I agree with you. I am not supportive of lending the schools with our, our funds. That's just me.
So two, two points. One is I would not categorize it as schools. I think it's the city, community, parents, everyone framing. That's really where the discussion came from, not just giving schools money. And they're potentially willing to put in resources. I want to explore those options to help Campbell residents. So, so.
If there's a way to explore it, I'm fine with it. I'm just, I'm hesitant. Let me just.
Yeah, I just, I'm, I'm personally don't see it in terms of just schools or the whole West Valley. And, and then the, the other thing I'll say is, I don't want to, I, I think those are great suggestions for unhoused individuals. But I don't want staff to be limited to, to those and just those existing programs. So, you know, I go. I, well, just.
You lost me, sorry.
I, I don't want staff to just be limited to looking at that program or those existing programs. Just to echo or, or to paraphrase how I just said, Councilwoman Bybee. Let's be creative and potentially think bigger and bolder while we have these resources.
Okay, let me just offer. We, we've been doing a good job of big picture. I'm trying to categorize it a little bit more. I would just offer the caution that we know there are some programs that other counties are doing, other areas in our county are doing well. And we, we don't have access to. If we open it up too much, staff's going to have too much to explore. I just offer that as a, as a concern.
And, and I think that's fair. I just, for, for me, tonight's meeting is not where I'm prepared to make that kind of programmatic decision. So I, I just think, yeah.
Okay.
If I could, could clarify, I, I, I feel that the mental health aspect of it shouldn't just be narrowed down to homeless because there's many people that suffer from mental illness that are not homeless and have limited resources in which to deal with their issues. And there are county programs and there are other cities that do participate in, in joint programs to address that. And so I think that's worth exploring.
I'm not aware of that, so I appreciate the clarification and that ties into what you're saying.
Yeah, and that was brought up, the Morgan Hill was brought up in relation to the schools, that that is a program that the schools are using.
I don't know enough, so.
With the county's mental health officers, the schools in the Morgan Hill area have a program. So that was kind of the connectivity with the mental health and the school.
Okay, so again, trying to help staff be somewhat focused, not totally open-ended. We could say, take a look at the Morgan Hill program and take a look at the North County, South County, a county, Santa Clara County homeless, uh, mental health, those two.
I also believe Mountain View has some type of a program.
Okay, so another example is Mountain View.
A lot greater resources than.
Yes, just, just a little, ju- just a little bit. Okay, good, good conversation, good clarification. Okay, the one thing that we, I think you mentioned and I mentioned was community development department. We have thirty-one new housing laws this year. A lot of it has to do with housing reporting requirements and new ordinances. And we, I, I would like to see if staff could come back with a proposal. I don't want to add staff, permanent staff, but I do think we have a, a challenge with the workload. Even though NASA's position is being filled and there's another person coming in to fill an earlier position that was frozen. I think that, that'll help, but the whole housing situation in terms of, of making it work well for us is draining on staff. And I'd like to see if we could, my thought was, but staff needs to make the proposal to confirm they do need it. And how they would recommend it is how would the staff like to get support to manage the housing, anything related to housing, however they want to define it for the next twelve, eighteen, twenty-four months? So we, we know, we, we get our arms around it. Is there any support for asking for that?
I, I just don't see, completely agree on the need. I just don't see the connection to recovery. And, and so I'm, I'm having trouble with that.
So the recovery is our market rate housing versus our below market rate housing and all of the, the reporting that we need to do to, to make sure that we're doing the right things to get our housing compliant with state law. To me, that is directly related to community and providing the right kind of housing.
Do you mean getting more affordable housing?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. This is all related to affordable housing.
Just reporting what we're doing or actually getting more?
So.
Can I chime in a little?
Of course.
So the, the thought process was we need better housing or more housing. We need lower, moderate, low, very low income housing. We have thirty-three bills now that have come forward. We're limited in staff. The department's down to three people, I think, two and a half, well.
Two plus the director.
Two plus the director. And the, the thought was that if, just like we were saying, can PD bring in someone on a short-term basis to help with the theft? Can we bring in someone into the planning to help with all these housing to, you know, how to move things forward? It was just a, a thought on how to try to address as many issues as we can.
Yeah, yeah. Thoughts?
I, I see that more in alignment with, with budget and staffing and recommendations that come forward through the budget process personally.
That means, that means a wait for, for six to nine months. I'm, I'm just saying, I, I just think the need is more urgent than that, but.
Well, and I, I mean, I, and I've set it up here before and have talked to the city manager about it, that if they need temporary staffing to help with the workload to get through this hurdle, then, then we need to be hearing that from staff and possibly doing a budget adjustment or hiring a consultant to help with that. I, I don't, I, I just think that adding staff for that particular purpose doesn't, again, fall within the parameters of, of this funding and it should be done through the budget process.
I'm, I'm, yeah, and absolutely agree on the need, but I'm, I agree with both.
We haven't had a real good discussion about the need, so I appreciate the dialogue. I'm fine with me to be a budget discussion, uh, needing to come forward from staff. So I appreciate the dialogue and I think the process has been identified if that's what staff feels they need. Okay. How about getting more police out on the streets? I mean, to me, crime, package theft, bicycle theft, car theft is all related to the economy and COVID. Now, maybe I'm being naive, but it certainly seems that that's gotten worse, sir.
I, I, I agree to some extent on the cause and effect. The, the issue for me here is that this, this is something that we're seeing show up in the headlines now. And, but the time to recruit and staff and then the, the retention throughout that process is, is a little challenging for me. And then are we actually gonna have funds to put in, 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 whatever form it takes? If it's officers on the street or something else, some other program enough to make an impact? It's a little bit like the hotel discussion for me. So I think we'd be limited in terms of impact.
So I don't disagree with that. I think what I'm putting out there is, there's a problem. To me, it is directly related to the economy and COVID. I don't know what the solution is. I'm asking PD to come forward with an idea. If they can't or don't think it'll work, you know, well, I don't know, this isn't the right time, I don't think, to get feedback. We're just letting you know that this is where I thought is. If, if they don't think it's useful, then so be it. But it just seems like the situation is deteriorating and our community is wanting solutions. So I'm not saying what that solution is and maybe we can't, but I'd like to at least ask the question.
And, and I'm open to ideas and further discussion. I, I think I was just responding, but.
Yeah.
Well, and all of this is for staff to come back. And so if Gary says I, we can't do anything in two months or a year, but the thought was, is there some stopgap? Like whether you bring in a reserve officer or, you know, bring in the short term to get more people on the street patrolling. But we want to hear back from all this, everything here.
Well, well, and I know that previously, uh, the police department did an innovative package theft program. So I, I, I think I'd like to see ideas in, in that vein.
Exactly, exactly.
Absolutely open to, to, to that.
I mean, I haven't got a clue what the right idea is. I'm just, I'm concerned.
Yeah, that's fair.
I think we just, I'm trying to emphasize that's an important part of economic revival is to help deal with this situation when everybody on every block is calling saying, I got broken into last night. That, that hurts them, it hurts us. And so Gary, we want to support you. What, you come back and tell us? Do you do another package theft program or whatever? But give, you know, let us know how we can help.
Right, exactly. Very nicely said. What is it that council can do with the ARPA funds that helps our community feel safe? Have economic recovery? That's where we're all coming from. We're all trying to figure out, and, and we don't know the answers. We've just tried to help corral the topics. Okay. Yes, Anne, I'm just looking at my notes to let me know if I've missed anything, Anne.
Well, the other thing to consider too is, you know, when you're talking about adding staff and, and personnel, you have to look to the future and the ability of being able to fund that, those positions beyond the, the ARPA fund. So, you know, we have to really be thoughtful and, and deliberate about it, I think.
So I think I didn't put enough information forward on that. I think I did say earlier, I'm not supportive of hiring new staff per se. I'm okay with hiring consultants. If PD can do overtime, if they can use different staff or different programs, I'm totally with you on the fact that we can't just say, do something, fix a problem and add for the whole issue of staffing. I, I, I'm sorry if I didn't make that totally clear, but I'm, you are a hundred percent, I'm in a hundred percent in your court. Okay, is there anything else that we may have missed that in my summary that to help staff move forward? Well, I was, I was trying to narrow it and they'll have to go back and figure it out. But I think there were a couple, there were a couple of priorities that clearly came out. Okay. All right, that's a discussion point. And with that, we only have a few items left. We would like to take a five-minute break and come back at ten o'clock. I know, but I should, I will, I'll leave, I'll leave it to, to others. Would you like to take a break? We, we were trying to take a break every two hours and I'm, I missed the nine thirty.
We don't have the council reorg and the.
We have.
You guys need a break? I know, I know.
Oh, you are the one that asked for it. Yes, you did. All right.
I, I really thank you everyone for the discussion. Thank you to staff. Very excited by this and the creativity and really being leaders in, in this area. Thank you.
What a problem to be in, that's have to find two point five. What a problem to be in that's have to find two-point-five million dollars to spend. Or we have the two-point-five, we just have to figure out how to spend it. But that's not a bad problem.
Okay, uh, with that, um, council uh permission, we'll move back on to um unfinished. We we need no action taken on that. The discussion is what it is. And we will move to unfinished business, business, item thirteen, City Council Policy Manual, Section one-point-three-three, the Annual Selection of Mayor and Vice Mayor. This is a resolution and roll call. The re- recommended action is that the city council adopt a resolution adding Section one-point-three-three annual selection of mayor and vice mayor to the City Council Policy Manual. And we have a presentation by City Clerk Dusty Christopherson.
Thank you. Just very briefly, um, this item is a continuation of the conversation on November the sixteenth, where staff was directed to prepare the council policy relation to the conversation that was had um, about the annual selection of mayor and vice mayor now that the city is organized into districts. So um, this resolution and policy just follows that discussion and um, I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
If there are no question, I have one question. I just asked staff, um, I thought the language was a little loose on understanding the rotation. Um, if um, we had a new person sitting in such that if um, it was number three's turn and they were brand new and number four was going to be vice mayor. Number four would move into being the mayor and three would be the vice mayor. And then five would move in. That's the rotation. And I just thought the language was a little uh we- weak on that. But if everybody's comfortable that they understand that that's what it is and number four in that case would not go back to becoming vice mayor, they just move after being mayor. Yes, sir.
Um, I I, my understanding of where we ended up was that we weren't mandating that that show up and we were
Yes, this is a proposal. This is just a proposal. Yes.
Okay, so so I'm fine with the language as a
Okay, all right. All right, if the question was, that was my question, um, if there's nothing else from council or open the public hearing and is there any discussion from the public? There's none in the audience here and anyone online?
Nothing.
No one online. We will close the public hearing and bring it back to council for a motion or discuss for the discussion. Councilmember Lopez.
Uh, just a brief comment would, so I'm, th- thank you to staff for the work here. Um, I'm I'm pleased with the language and and changes and we had a great discussion last time. I would just put out there that if there are things that came up or if things arise where um, we we need to go back to the charter, put it to the voters, I I I, you know, I I think we should consider that as an option in the future for some things, not necessarily for for the issues being addressed here, but there may be some loose ends that aren't that that we're not able to tie up because of that. I'm, may I look a little confused. I'm thinking specifically of of the 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 two-year language is is a little awkward right now with with uh districts. And it's not a major issue for me, but um Vice Mayor Reznikoff brought up that it could potentially encourage people to move from one district to another. I don't think
Oh, 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 oh. Thank you. Um, this language about terms, um, um, and you could move from district to district after two years and run again.
I don't, I don't think it's the biggest
I don't think it's the biggest issue either.
But if if other things arise, there there may be other loose ends. I I I would be fine with discussing that as
You can't keep someone from moving. And so the thing is two terms consecutively. So if you didn't win in one election, you're not two consecutive terms and you have the right to move.
Actually had that happen. We, someone ran it one, uh, elected one term, missed the second term. Our second election came back two years later and ran again.
Yeah, so
With districts is I I get, yeah.
Well, I I don't, I, it's a problem that we haven't had yet. I think the policy is good for now. Every so often, it can be reviewed. If we have a new council that comes in, they're certainly open to be reviewing the policy, but a person has a right to move, so I don't think we want to be restricting that.
That that's fair. And and I'm absolutely fine with the policy as presented.
All right, thank you for that question. Um, and is anyone willing to make a motion?
Sure, I'll go ahead and and move that the city council adopt a resolution adding Section one-point-three-three annual selection of mayor and vice mayor to the city council policy manual.
Second, we have a motion by Councilmember Bybee, seconded by Councilwoman Landry. May we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Bybee?
Aye.
Councilwoman Landry?
Aye.
Councilmember Lopez?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Reznikoff absent. Mayor Gibson.
Aye, thank you very much. And we will now go to council committee reports.
I I have no report.
And um, I guess I'm next. Um, I don't have committee reports other than what we've already talked about about the uh Education Committee Subcommittee meeting. Um, my Recycling and Waste Reduction Committee is Wednesday, and I did want to bring up one thing that I talked to the city manager about. There is a provision in thirteen-eighty-three that um, there's a potential to pass an ordinance regarding recycled material and paper products. And in talking with the city manager, like I thought we had to pass the ordinance, but what he was saying is we already are doing some of that and we don't need a specific ordinance. So I just want to highlight that part of SB thirteen-eighty-three, this whole garbage recycling is that we as a city can then be also doing buying recycled products like for paper towels and Yeah.
And there's a, there's gonna be a revised administrative policy that that is consistent with that.
That's where I was heading towards, yeah.
Councilmember Lopez, I think you're up.
Yep, um, so only one for me is the Education Subcommittee. And in addition to some what came up during during the discussion, um, I'll add that there are really fantastic comments, just good learning all around to get everybody on the same page, just what we're doing in similar areas. And um, I I I think potential for natural collaboration that, you know, it a rare instance where it's not more money, it's not more staff, it's just let's get on the same page and get aligned. Um, some great, we didn't talk as much about the library, but they're doing a lot of great work. Um, so very appreciative to Councilwoman Landry and everybody who joined in that meeting. And I I know that these, uh, you know, our education leaders are some of the most impacted and and uh, they're sketch, so it's not easy to get um, uh, uh, be able to get them there. So really appreciate everybody um, jumping in and and having a great session.
It was one of my favorite committees, so I'm glad it's doing better. Uh, okay, uh, for me, um, we met as a council for the city manager's performance um, review, which is typical of our responsibilities at this time of year. Uh, the Economic Development Subcommittee has a meeting coming up. Silicon Valley Clean Energy continues to meet. We've had some very um interesting big meeting tomorrow. Um, the big, uh, Todd went to the the Cal CCA conference on um, December first for the day. Very, very good panels talking about what's happening in the energy market. Um, the CPUC is raising havoc with adding mandate after mandate. Um, the price of um, power is going from thirty-four um dollars per, I think it's megawatt hour to sixty-five dollars a megawatt hour. Now it's going back down to fifty-four mega dollars a megawatt hour. The point is, when the P uh CPUC keeps adding mandates completely out of the blue, they add huge demand on the production of power. And it just puts the supply and demand up like crazy. The good news is, of course, we've had rain in the Pacific Northwest. Um, a lot of the dams there and here are coming back up. They haven't reached historical um, uh, medians at this point, but it's better than it was two months ago. Um. And the future of PG&E uh with all the lawsuits and fires. So again, there's a a question out there, what is going to happen to PG&E in terms of being a power provider? They are uh likely to continue being the utility distribution network. But power provider is another question. There was a final determination that Diablo Canyon will not stay online. Um, which has pros and cons, no matter how you look at it. But that decision has been made and the door closed on that. Um. Councilmember Reznikoff and I participated uh in the lighting of the Hanukkah celebration at the Prun Yard last Thursday night. It was well-attended. Very delightful uh positive experience uh for everyone who attended. So thank you for that. Um, Silicon Valley Leadership Group is holding a series of panels on Fridays. Um, I attended the first one. They're all related to the housing crisis. Um, they're a little bit better than some of their panels in the past. Um, there was actually good discussion about people who know what they're talking about and it didn't become political. And there wasn't any voting. It was just a good discussion on on all the various factors. So I'm looking forward to the next three uh sessions on that. Um, we all attended um a Housing Element Study Session on uh, November thirtieth. Is that right? I missed that. Whatever date it was, we did it eighteenth, November eighteenth, which was after the last council meeting. Um, which we appreciated the effort by staff uh to pull that together. We have another important one coming up on the sixteenth. Um, so I encourage everyone um to participate in that. I also attended the Saratoga Council Transition with Mayor Wale- uh, Walea and Vice Mayor Fitzsimmons. Um, I attended the ABAG meeting um and um doing the usual ABAG stuff. Um, I attended the Cal Cities Legislative Reasoning, which was useful because it talked about the the legislation that was passed, but also the legislation that went into two years and what the potential is for the upcoming um years. Uh, second half of the term, um, what would happen. And um, attended the Sert Hammond Park uh Practice. Uh, very good um effort by our Sert program and was attended by Campbell PD and they brought along their mobile um, Emergency Operations Center. And uh, we, I also held a uh meeting with the commission chairs. Was a very nice meeting. Um, we try and do that with the mayor and co- uh commissions every year. Um, but this year it also became a thank you meeting because we didn't have our annual thank you uh dinner for all the commissions. And um, it was a very nice discussion and I encourage um mayors going forward to have that meeting. It was, everybody appreciated the dialogue. People got to meet people they didn't know. Um, and um, the youth commission was there. Um, so very, very nice, positive experience. And let's see, I had a conversation with the Santa Clara County Supportive Housing Group and they are still actively looking to do Measure A projects and Home Key project opportunities in Campbell, which is all to the good as well. And that is all I have to say. If there is nothing else by anyone?
Also briefly, I was also at the Cal CCA Conference, very informative, um, and at the Hanukkah lighting, so uh, great turnout for that. And I'm looking forward uh tomorrow to Silicon Valley Clean Energy. Should be great.
Ice skating. Okay, with that, we will adjourn this meeting to our next regularly scheduled, do we say to the uh study session? Or do we say to the next scheduled meeting? It's a regular, it's a special city council meeting. The special council meeting of December sixteenth, yes. Thank you all. Thank you for sticking around. Thank you.